Roll call.
Chair Simpson.
Here.
Vice Chair Cottler.
Here.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
And Commissioners Walker and Griffin are absent.
Thank you very much. On the, under the agenda review, we have our regular order of business and under new business, we have a public hearing. Are there any changes or additions to that?
No ma'am.
We have no consent agenda. Counsel liaison announcement. Robin, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
I just wanted to point out that I was on time. Because it never happens now.
Duly noted.
I know. Tuesdays are a busy night. You know, what's coming up next week on the city council agenda is the hopeful adoption of the budget. So, we'd invite all concerned citizens to come and watch that happen. We also will be opening the discussion on the TSP, hopefully finishing that night, but it's a pretty big agenda, so it may be carried over to July 1st. We have decided to continue and have a meeting on July 1st. I actually will not be in attendance at the council meeting next Tuesday, but I will be on the phone. Kristin Schweitzer and I are going to DC to advocate for this city to various agencies. I wanted to publicly acknowledge, another opportunity to publicly acknowledge Julia and her staff. Last year, when Council President Henderson and Tom Pesamir, our Assistant City Manager, went to DC, they met with the EPA. We had just recently learned that our grant had been declined, and they asked while they were in a meeting, such as I will be going to next week, you know, what could we do to be more competitive? And they gave them specific instructions, and Tom gave that to Julia, and Julia ran with it, and we were just awarded a $200,000 grant to help study what needs to happen with the Tannery site. Very big deal. It's a very big step. It's basically acknowledging that the site has concerns and the federal government is willing to try to help with those concerns.
Wonderful.
So, that's a really, we were expecting perhaps $50,000, so $200,000 was quite the gift. There was a little, I think there was probably a party near your department. Well, that's probably my fault. I was supposed to bring cupcakes, no. So, that's what's coming up on council. It actually is shaping up to be a pretty busy summer. There's a lot going on with the Cultural Center, and we're working with some professional grant writers, and it, you may notice, it's going vertical today. Did anybody else notice that? Do a little cheer as they drove by. So, it's a busy summer for city council, but things are going along well.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much. Staff announcements. Brad?
Good evening. Only really two announcements tonight. Just first to announce that we will have a planning commission meeting on the 24th of this month for a landmark alteration here in Old Town for a single-family home addition. And the second thing I wanted to introduce is that Trimat, I met with Trimat today. They'll be introducing their first draft of their enhanced service plan for Sherwood. So, for some of you that have attended that workshop that they had, they are looking at providing service to the Y, and the service between Sherwood and Toaleton is one of their priorities for their whole plan, for the whole southwest corridor. That's a priority for them, so, just an FYI. And once we have that, I'll send out an email, and Kirsten will send out an email to The Blast, I'll send out an email to y'all, letting you know where to look at that and how to provide comments to Trimat.
Wonderful. Well, that's exciting. Thank you very much. All right. We have community comments. Community comments are limited to those items not already on the agenda. And I see Kirsten bringing blue cards. Thank you. The first is Tony Bevel, and they will, if you could make sure the microphone key is up, speak into it, and the timer is set for four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Bevel. I live at 17036 Southwest Lindley Way, Sherwood. Again, I'm addressing the traffic calming problem on our street. Well, the problem is that we don't have a traffic calming device on our street. Our street is designated as a neighborhood street, and in fact, I mean, it doesn't take a traffic engineer to figure out that it's turned into a through street from Roy Rogers to Edie Road. One citizen even on Houston took the liberty to spray paint a stop sign on a corner, which since has got a stop sign put there. But I think that shows, you know, the level of frustration that some people are feeling, including myself, about traffic going through there. So, I was advised to file a complaint with the police. I did that last week. The complaint, I guess, is going to the code enforcement officer, and for me, I wrote a lengthy description of what went on. So, I'm hoping that from there, it gets to the people who need to see it and, you know, take some action on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Robert Claus.
And I want to comment generally to you on what I believe. Now, not having had as much experience as Mr. Kean has in this, I'm sure my opinion and beliefs not going to have a lot of weight. We have the strongest form of city manager government possible. That is done because the city manager is supposed to administer almost all of the functions in the town. The only thing, if we had a city attorney, which we don't, we have a contract attorney that's obligated to represent the city manager, city council, and the mayor, that would be out from under his end. And what happens is, you're supposed to make policy decisions, and you're supposed to do it in a clear way. Canada, they use a hearing examiner, and it is done much more clearly than here, because it is not the kind of hearing examiner we use in Oregon. What I am telling you is, when you make the policy decision, you don't sell zoning because the mayor or two councilors sitting in the room putting pressure on you. The Fourteenth Amendment doesn't let you do that. Neither does Title 42 USC 1983 and 88. So, when you look at these applications, you are in fact making a policy decision. You're not administering the law. Now, both the Fifth, the due process component of the Fifth Amendment, and the Fourteenth Amendment demand non-abertary, non-capricious, non-unreasonable language that is consistently and fairly enforced. That's what due process means. What I have seen is people skirting very cleverly, I hope with legal advice, ex parte contact in Oregon. Ex parte contact and the ethics in Oregon are very marginal. It's pleasant when you go to federal court and you can ask, who did you talk to? It's called undue influence. And the federal courts really, now, of course, as I say, sure, I haven't had much experience in this kind of litigation. I'm sure your attorney has much more experience than I have. What I've seen is based on personality, he gets what. I've seen the council and this body participate in private decisions where major public policy was made, flat denial, they were making it, flat denial contracts have been signed, flat denial Walmart was going to parcel property, and flat denial it was Walmart. And I think, Mr. Cottler, you remember that from the councilman that assured us it wasn't Walmart multiple times. So, as you go over this application, you're really taking general commercial that's been rezoned, and you're now deciding to introduce residential density. This is the natural probable consequence of what you did in the urban renewal area. You sold commercial and retail zoning in Lake Industrial. I hope as you realize this, if you make this decision, and I know the staff will back this, and I have great faith, they will try to be fair and consistent, you keep in mind, I have doubts you are, and I believe in some cases, there has been, God forbid I should say this, a conspiracy to violate civil rights. So, I ask you for once to spend a little time on the policy decision so we can find it, rather than know that it was made politically. Thank you.
I do not have any other blue cards for this evening. If you would like to either make community comments or to testify at the public hearing, we ask you to fill out one of these blue cards and turn it in to the recording secretary. So, seeing no other community comments, we'll move on to new business, which is a public hearing, and I have a disclosure statement to read. This says quasi judicial, so, okay. Okay. The public hearing on PUD 1401, SUB 1401 Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the report, which is 15 minutes. There's questions, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. The applicant will be allowed 30 minutes split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will be allowed four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant will be the remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. There'll be final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any, by the commission, and then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. If you wish to speak, fill out one of the testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, indicate the nature or extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. And this is the quasi judicial. Now, this is a quasi judicial that we're making a recommendation to the council for, so we will not make the final decision, and we'll go to the council.
Before you start, Chair Simpson, I've asked Chris to just give you guys a little refresher, because we're dealing with ex parte contacts through social media these days, and so I just wanted him to, because of comments given at community events, to not have asked him to respond to that.
Yeah. It's coming up more and more that, you know, city councillors have blogs, planning commissioners have Facebook pages, people have, the whole social media environment is expanding and creating other opportunities for people to communicate with a decision maker in a quasi judicial proceeding outside of the record. So, I just wanted to remind everyone that anything that you, any communications you engage in, in social media are equally ex parte communications, as well as a conversation you might have in the grocery store, or a telephone call, or email conversation, or communication you may have with people. So, you know, note any, I already was talking earlier with councillor, our Commissioner Robinson, I guess she's going to talk about Facebook communications, but those sorts of things are kind of things that we also want to, need to get out on the record so that everybody has an opportunity to know what information you're getting before you make a decision, so that they can reply to it or respond to it. So, that in a nutshell was what Brad wanted me to remind folks about. And the other thing, this is my favorite bugaboo, if you get an email from Brad or anyone else, don't hit reply all. That makes it a public meeting. So, any questions?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, I will take it upon myself to disclose that I participated in testimony by way of an email on the comprehensive, or the zone change, correct?
The earlier zone change.
And although I submitted that email, I do not believe that my participation in that, limited participation in that process, has any bearing on my ability to make a fair and comprehensive evaluation of all the evidence that we made here tonight and what we're reviewing. Secondly, I did post a Facebook message indicating that, encouraging people to attend the meeting tonight. I did not engage in any discussions with anybody. There were a couple posts on there, but those posts don't necessarily reflect my opinion. And I believe I can make a very fair evaluation of all the evidence without any bias.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Yes, myself. Yes, I'd like to disclose my association with Mr. Jeff Simpson out there. Him and I worked together at WRG. That was over 10 years ago. Since then, we haven't had any collaboration on any projects, and I haven't actually, unfortunately, I haven't actually had a chance to meet with him in the near, in the past future, which I kind of feel bad, because he's a, well, he's somebody that I've worked with and I respect. So, that's just, I don't, I don't believe I have any ex parte. We, there was no knowledge that he was going to be here regarding this project, so I think I'm good to go.
Right before the meeting, Eugene approached me to ask a question regarding the roundabout, but I didn't engage with him in the conversation. I just asked him to ask staff if he had any questions regarding that. And as the city attorney has mentioned before, anybody in the building material industry at some point supplies to DR Horton. I work for a company that is a wholesale distributor. We do not sell directly to DR Horton. We sell to door shops and other suppliers. So, our customers sell to them. I have, as remote of connection as that is, I thought I would put it on the record if anybody had any concerns or questions regarding that relationship. I believe that I will be able to impartially perform my duties tonight. Are there any other further disclosures? All right. Then, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any planning commission member's ability to participate this evening?
Are you telling us that you are a building?
Excuse me, this needs to be on the record. Can you restate the question?
If you could come to my...
Or you could restate the question.
Or, or I can restate it. So...
Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. Are you telling us tonight that you supply to subcontractors for DR Horton?
I do not supply, my, I am in the accounting department of a wholesale company who distributes to door shops. We do not sell to subcontractors, nor do we sell to DR Horton.
So, you're a wholesaler that sells to other wholesalers?
To door shops.
Explain what you mean by that.
We sell door hardware to door shops. They put our hardware on the doors and then supply them to their hardware.
So, in other words, if someone bought your hardware as a subcontractor...
We do not sell to subcontractors.
Well, what do you think...
Excuse me, excuse me. If the witness would like to challenge the testimony, let's get that on the record.
I'm challenging it.
Okay. Thank you. Duly noted.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Thank you.
You've got it right.
We've got it on the record. Thank you.
Okay. So, you're cha, so, but it's irrelevant, because we have such a very remote...
We don't get to determine whether it's relevant. If it ever gets to Luba, then they can decide, but it's on the record.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. We will proceed with the hearing. So, at this time, the staff will present the staff report.
Thank you. Michelle Miller, I'm a senior planner with the planning department. We received an application that we've entitled Cedar Brook Way Planned Unit Development. I'm going to use the term PUD and Planned Unit Development interchangeably. It's just an acronym for us planners. So, the issue tonight before the commission is, should the planning commission recommend approval of the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development, a 66-unit high-density residential development with a mix of single-family detached homes and attached townhomes? So, one of the unique things about a Planned Unit Development, it allows a project to have some flexibility in the standard code requirements for challenging parcels, and the trade-off that the community gets is innovative design and a general benefit to the community. And one of the unique things about the planning, a Planned Unit Development, is that the community decides through our planning commission and our city council. It's not something that staff can decide. We really, we review the application as it references the standards in the code and any deviations in the code. So, I'll be going through some of those deviations that, in the code, as well as the engineering department. There's some street modifications as well to the code requirements. I want to also give you the definition of Planned Unit Development and what the purpose is, because I think it's clearly from the code, and it really defines what you'll be evaluating tonight as you, as you make your recommendation. So, Planned Unit Developments integrate buildings, land use, transportation facilities, utility systems, and open space through overall site design on a single parcel of land or multiple properties under one or more ownerships. The PUD process allows creativity and flexibility in site design and review, which can't be achieved through a strict adherence to existing zoning and subdivision standards. So, being a Type 5 Planned Unit Development Process Review, the PC, as Chair Simpson indicated, the planning commission forwards a recommendation of approval, approval with some modifications to the staff report, or a denial of the application to the city council. The city council then considers the recommendation by and holds a public hearing to determine whether to accept the PUD. The city council is the ultimate decision maker for Planned Unit Developments. Any appeals will go directly to the Land Use Board of Appeals, and then, if approved, the final development approval is back in the planning commission's hands. So, that is the process for the Planned Unit Developments overall. This particular project is a 66-lot residential development with single-family attached and detached homes. The outlined area in red indicates the parcel that we're talking about. It's about 5.77 acres, gross acres, and 3.87 acres developable area. Directly to the east of the property is Creekview Apartments, that development, and then to the west is Arboretum, Vineyard Some Division, and Miller's Landing is up here. To the south are some commercial developments, office buildings, and this is southwest Minneke Parkway with an intersection. Highway 99W runs in pretty close proximity to the development. For the record, it's tax lot 2S 130CD 13400. So, the site is now zoned high-density residential. I don't know what that, what happened. And it is, the applicant proposes lot size between 1,600 square feet and 32, 3,245 square feet. Because it's a Planned Unit Development, when the zone was changed, when the zone change was approved with Planned Unit Development 1304, or PA 1304, the brownstone tax amendment, council approved for a limited time to allow no minimum lot size requirement within this zone, should a development be approved as a Planned Unit Development. So, this zone is unique from all the other residential zones in that it allows no minimum lot size if developed as a Planned Unit Development. Thus, the reduction in the standard 5,000-square-foot lot minimums for single-family homes. The high-density residential has a density requirement of 16.8 to 24 units per acre, if, and that's standard. If it were to be developed as a standard subdivision, there'd be a 5% open space requirement with a subdivision of this size. But in this case, because it's a Planned Unit Development, it will require 15% area of open space, which I'll talk about in a little bit. In this case, the density is 16.8 to 24. The project includes a buildable area of 3.87 with a minimum density of 65 units per acre and a maximum number of 92 acres, 92 units per acre. The applicant proposes 66 dwelling units, which equals about 17.1 dwelling units per acre, thus satisfying the criteria. And the applicant will talk about this during their presentation, but after the staff report was drafted, the applicant came in with amended site design where they are reducing the number of lots to 65 and bumping up the amount of open space, and they will go over that in greater detail during their presentation. So, to talk a little bit about the housing types for this development, there are approximately, there are 38 units that will be proposed to be two-story townhomes with one car garage in the front facing what's known as Street A, and there are 15 units that will be single-family detached with rear-loaded garages. And the corresponding size and number of parking, parking spaces are included in that, as well as two-story townhomes with two-car alley-loaded garages. So, how that looks on the site plan is the, the 38 single-car garage units are all along the perimeter of proposed Street A. Here's Minneke Parkway, and this is proposed Cedar Brook Way as it goes through. So, north is this way on the screen. And there'll also be some one-car attached units along this portion of the site. And this is what's known as Track G. It's called a private street or an alleyway. And these houses are all the single-family detached units, and they will have access to the private street this way. And here are the single fam, the 15 units that are the two-car garage townhomes, which are 54 to 66. So, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the code modifications or deviations requested. So, we look at the single-family detached. Our standard for, for that zone for houses is 5,000 square feet. The applicant has proposed 2,374 square foot minimum for that lot size as the minimum proposed, and the attached townhomes of 1,585 square feet, with the standard being 1,800 square feet for an attached townhome. You can see the lot width. It meets the lot width requirement and the lot width at the building line as well. The lot depth, there's a unit with a 71-foot minimum, so that is also a deviation of the standard requested. To talk a little bit about setbacks, that's how much yard space that you have in the front and back and aside, and your distance between the different houses. And we have standards with respect to the garage, and if there's also a porch included. And these homes all are proposed to have porches, and those are the requested deviations that the applicants requested as well. You can see the, one of the questions that came to light during the course of the review of the, of the staff report was whether lots 38, both Lot 38 and 39, will have a porch that's setback seven feet over the 14, or it's just Lot 39. The applicant's material talks of just one lot, Lot 39 having that, but then their table indicates that they're asking for a deviation for... that, but then their table indicates that they're asking for a deviation for Lot 38 and 39. So that is a question to, to talk about as well. Going through single-family detached, you see three feet on the, the separation for the side yard setbacks and also on, on the attached homes as well. The rear yard, there are several homes that are requesting a deviation of six feet, and the garage setbacks are also indicated there to be setback 20 feet except for two of the, two of the lots. And the height is within the high-density standards as well. So to talk a little bit about the Cedar Brook Planned Unit Development parking, here's the example of the parking lot layout. You can see that the one-car attached units will all have a, a single garage as well as enough room for parking on, within the driveway, as well as these homes also. The two-car, single-family detached will have the two-car garage as well as two spots on the driveway accessing the private street or alley, as well as the two-story, two-car attached townhomes will also have four spaces individually. The applicant proposes, the applicant proposes 79 spaces for on-street parking. Cedar Brook Way is proposed to include 60 parking spaces on both sides of the street. Street A, which is this public street, will have parking on one side of the street, approximately 19 spaces included in that. So to take a look at, the, these are the, which I'll talk a little bit about later, but this is a good picture to show the layout. This, these units will only have the one car and one driveway spot, and there'll be very limited access to on-street parking availability along this private street for no parking will be allowed. So that is a primary concern with this layout that, that staff has with, with this configuration as proposed. And so here's the, the description of the parking as well as the number of spots. You can see the two-story has the 38 spaces for those homes. The two-story, single-family detached, you have about 30 spaces altogether in the garage as well as the driveway. One of the issues with our code is that townhomes do allow garages to be counted for parking, but then when you get to the parking standard, the general parking standard, garages don't count because a lot of people perceive that garages might, may not be used for individual parking and thus creating parking issues for some of, for some of the on-street parking or if there's not enough parking. And in this situation, as we know, the Cedar Brook area definitely has some issues, has anecdotally is found to have some, some parking problems. And so it'll just be something that the commission will need to review very carefully as you're, as you're going through the proposal. So talking a little bit about the areas of open space, Planned Unit Developments are required to have at least 15% open space in the development. That can either be maintained, dedicated to the public, or be privately maintained by the development or the homeowners association. In this case, the applicant initially has approved 21% of the area to be open space or .83 acres. I know that they've increased that a little bit more, and I don't have that exact calculation in front of me. Here's the number of tracks. You can see that it's, quite a few tracks are separated out within the development. The largest tracks are Track K, which is just on the other side of Cedar Brook Way, kind of apart from the development, and Track E, which is the track internally. The applicant has proposed that Track K be dedicated to the public, and in that regard, you can kind of see the areas, the larger areas of open space are where that round circle is in the center of the property and also on the other side of Cedar Brook Way where I have the arrow indicating the connection, the trail connection to the already developed area in the Vineyards subdivision. There's that connection that the applicant is proposing and, and part of our transportation system plan to have that connection to the development as well. A few weeks ago, staff went before the parks board to get their feedback on whether they were in favor of having that land be dedicated to the city. This is the area a little bit closer, closer up in what they've proposed so far. And you can kind of see the trail network that's also proposed here. In reviewing the proposal, the parks board was reluctant to accept that area's dedication. They thought that the area wasn't large enough to really be meaningful to add to our park system. They also felt that the, the system development charges that would be credited for, for dedication would not, would be better utilized to serve the city as a whole rather than to the specific development. And thus, they were requesting that the developer maintain the park area and maintain it for, through an HOA process and CCNRs and, but the trail easement would still be obtained through the project and go through Track K. If you have questions about how SDCs are calculated for parks, Bob's here to kind, to talk about that as well and answer any questions that you might have. And he's also going to talk next about some of the street modifications that have been requested through this proposal.
Bob Galati, City Engineer. Based on the letter in the back, the MRO Design Letter, which we signed off on, this was based on discussions between the design team and city staff and trying to come up with resolution to all the design criteria and issues that were presented during the design phase. Basically, you're looking at four items: the private street request modification, non-standard bulbout, intersection of A and Minneke, and curd-tight sidewalks on A Street, which will also include some rollover curbs, mountable curbs. Just as a starting point, basically, before we got into this, when they, when the developer first came in, he presented a layout that had design variations already built into it. And we had to backstep and say, listen, before we even get into the variation, design variance concept, we want to know what happens with meeting all the requirements of our standard road layout requirements. And they presented us with that layout initially, and it was a dramatic reduction in the ability to actually develop the lot in any feasible form. Spacing standards with the right-of-way requirements, PUEs, all the curb stuff that was going on, it really reduced the ability to even do single-family residential, which also started to look at, okay, well, what are the alternatives? You could go with a complete apartment complex. Again, that would be the other end of the scale from single-family residential, or you could do something in between. So we tried to modify the city standards to meet the intent of providing city streets that meet our, our standards, generally speaking. They are not unique in that anything that we proposed is, has not been done before in the city it has, and that we could defend it fairly easily based on the design that is being presented. So when we're looking at, take for instance, the Street A, where there's no parking on one side, to do driveway drops at each and every one of those things is a bunch of up and down movement. So we said, okay, you're not going to have a planter strip there because of the density of the driveways. You're not going to have a, be able to put a planter strip in there, and then you're not going to, it's not going to be feasible to actually put a driveway drop that didn't incur a lot of up and down movement, a lot of formwork. So we said, let's put a rollover curb at that thing, match it to what we have already, which is our downtown street standard for railroad and the cannery site here. We basically said, this type of system that we have down here is doable. We like it. We've adopted it before for this, for, for, for city streets under certain conditions, and it's, it's feasible. It doesn't create a problem for either the city or the developer. So we went along with that. The private street standard, again, because of the way the site was laid out, we, there had to be access of some sort, but putting in a full street with development within that, you know, the right-of-way that basically tried to take in and put in within the, where the alleyway or the private alley would be, it just cut off too much development. So we said, okay, what needs do we actually have to do to get it to work? And how could we mitigate or minimize the number of, of units that would not be directly accessible to public right-of-way, which is a requirement? With that standard, this is what we came up with. If you're looking at, I'm looking at the, what is this sheet number? 71, on page 71. So we, they basically showed us this layout, which incorporated a 21-foot-wide back-up curb to back-up curb with pavement section, private alley, with a bulbout at the corner, at the acute corner. The 21-foot width, there is a standard by Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue that says they need a 20-foot clear, absolutely clear paved section, no obstructions. This alleyway also has, sort of like the one of curb, the downtown street section, it's a rollover curb. It's very minimal. So we're thinking that it does meet the, that standard. It doesn't provide a, a real obstacle towards, you know, movement of any traffic. It's not going to damage anything. So in that respect, we do think that we've met the contingency requirements of the fire district in that they need 20-foot clear by giving them that rollover curb in conjunction with the roadway. So the, that is, let's see, that is the private street. The bulbout, again, we, we put that in there just so that there could be some turning movements of, of the fire truck. This is a one-way street, basically. It's not going to be a two-way street. So it's a, it's a single load. You come in one side and you go out the other. It's going to have to be signed that way. There's not going to be any parking on that private alley. There won't be any place to put garbage cans out on it. Basically, it has to be a completely clear roadway. So the, the non-standard bulbout was what we could do to provide for fire truck turning radius through there. The intersection of A and Southwest Minneke Road, again, we were looking at this and saying, okay, this is not a full-developed turn intersection. It doesn't meet the spacing standards from Highway 99. It's too close to the roundabout. However, we can make it a right-in, right-out, which means people coming into the complex on A Street can make the turning movement in. People coming out of the complex, if they want to go down Minneke to get to the highway, basically, they have the roundabout there. So it doesn't prevent that movement. It, they can still do that without having any hindrance, and we thought that was a good way of dealing with it. And then the final, again, is curd-tight sidewalk on Southwest A Street because, again, driveway drop spacing and everything like that, we just modified it so that we could get it in. So if there's any other specific questions you have about that, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Just looking for the private street condition, but I will look for that while the rest of this goes on.
So with that, I just have a few comments about the review of the staff report. As I indicated before, I have the parking issue for lots 29 to 38 that abut Southwest Minneke. Concerned that there's not adequate on-street parking in close enough proximity to really be adequate for this development. I know that we really hope that people will utilize the garages, but I, I think in some cases that that won't be enough, or if there's visitors, that they might have to park far away. And also with the unlimited amount of parking that's on, on-street near Cedar Brook Way, that seems pretty far for any visitors to, to come. We can probably assume that there may be two-car families in these developments, and I, I think that that would just suit the, the homeowners, and there really wouldn't be any flexibility or room for any, any other visitors that might come to the site and, or to the individual homes. I know that we do have some mass transit and all of those indications that come with high density, but they really don't come to that side of, of the city. And at this time, I think that we really need to be mindful of the fact that most people drive in our community and really need the, the vehicles to get to where they're going and providing accessible parking for them. At this time is, is pretty critical. Also, the size of the single-car garages that they talked about in the townhome were limited to eight feet, and our standard parking is nine by 20. So these garages are a little smaller than our standard. Sure, we can have that deviation for compact spaces and 25% can be used for, for, to satisfy the parking requirement, but I'm not sure in this case if this is the appropriate spot to be placing those compact spaces, especially if there's some larger vehicles. Also, I wanted you to be, take a close look at the open space requirements. When you, when you heard about the tax amendment, you heard what kind of user might be, what kind of homeowner or property owner might be moving into these homes, and might be some empty nesters or some, or young families as well. So kind of keep that in mind as you're evaluating the areas of open space. I don't think it necessarily needs to be large, too large, but I think it needs to be designed appropriately that meet with our community standards. That goes as well with the architectural pattern book. I think that we will, I would urge the commission to really consider through the final development plan approval whether the architectural pattern book clearly shows what kind of housing that we're going to be getting and that it meets with the highest community standards that the citizens expect. Also, let's see. Want to talk a little bit about Track B. That is the area that separate, the pathway that separates the apartments and the, this development. That pathway is limited to five feet, which is fine, but our code also requires three-feet buffers on either side for landscaping in between fences. So that potential, I would ask that that be considered modified as well, and I have that recommended condition in the staff report.
Where, where's Track B? I'm sorry.
Um, Track B is on the far eastern side.
Oh, I see it. Got it.
That's about a 500 square foot.
I see it there.
Tracked, open space. And also, Chair Simpson, you've kind of talked about this, that our CCNRs that, that are proposed and can be reviewed during the final development plan really clearly define how the site will be adequately maintained and that those areas of open space are maintained with the, through the HOA or how they're going to do that and how that's proposed to be done. Also, the property owners will really have to have a clear knowledge going in that some of our accessory structures and deck standards will not be feasible in these type, these, with the limited setback requirements. And so that could be outlined And so, that could be outlined in the CCNRs as well, and so that those, those standards be really clearly defined so that property owners can go in with open eyes as they select the homes. So, talking a little bit about tonight's next steps, the applicant will have their presentation. We'll be asking for citizen testimony. We'll have time for a staff response and the recommendation. I almost forgot, we did receive a citizen comment that's marked as Exhibit B from Ms. Allison Holden. She indicated a concern with respect to the school population over at Edie Ridge and Laurel Ridge Middle Schools, and what the impact of this development would have on that, the crowding of that school. And as we learned through the text amendment phase, school population fluctuations can't be a determining factor in approval or denial of a single application. The school district did receive notice of the application, and they've been in the loop as far as any projections for the boundary assessments of the different schools. The overall Sherwood School District elementaries, there's some of the schools that have a lower population and are not at maximum capacity, and that they will be thinking about how they will be handling any new population. So, with that, I'll take any questions or to Bob and I about the proposal.
Staff memo also.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair Simpson. So, in looking at the staff report, I prepared a memo dated today requesting some amendments to the staff report, some changes to the findings and recommended conditions. I can go over those if you have any questions or take some time to look at those. Again, it was just prepared today. Some are, some adding some beef to the discussion and a combination of changing some of those conditions.
It's also my understanding that this is the first time that the applicant has had an opportunity to see this memo. So, I would ask for a five-minute opportunity for us to read and this memo before we ask the applicant to come up, so that everybody has a chance to read it and see how this answers any questions. Does anybody have any questions of staff before we?
I do.
I do too.
I just need a, just clarification on the staff notes on page 25 at the top of the As you were indicating on tract B, on the plans, we are showing lots six and seven, but in your notes, you're indicating there's lots 22 and 23.
I'm sorry, missed that question.
Page 25 in the staff notes.
Uh-huh.
The, regarding the sidewalk and the three-foot.
Oh, it's misnumbered?
Yes, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's, sorry about that. It is between lots six and seven.
Yeah.
Thanks for catching that. I'd ask that that be amended.
Okay.
And I have questions, and several. So, I'll just start running through them. On page nine, we're looking into the open space and trail requirements. And it says the Parks Board had recommended Option Four. In the selection of those options, did staff consider the safety of pedestrians walking between this development and the connection to the vineyards as far as coyotes go? Because there's coyotes in the area? And I have a concern about the safety issue with that trail.
There's a lot of animal life in that vicinity. It is a vegetated corridor, and it's a string corridor. There's skunks, there's rats, there's lots of stuff down there. Did we take that all into consideration as far as meeting the requirements of the transportation system plan relative to pedestrian connectivity? No. Is, if it's a safety consideration of the trail design, that'll come out through the design process. We can, we can work with it at that point in time, but right now, what we're looking at is, does it comply with the requirements of the TSP with respect to pedestrian connectivity?
Okay. And I don't know if I heard this correctly or not. I thought that Michelle had made a comment about the addendum, and maybe I'm jumping ahead, but the addendum, reducing the homes to 65 instead of 66, having to do with creating more open space. And I'm not sure how that fits into the comments in here by staff on the open space as determined by the Parks and, the Parks Commission.
Well, let the applicant talk about the reduction in area of open space, but all the planning, the Parks Board heard was the 66th lot subdivision. So, having heard some of that information, I think that that prompted, and I'm just speculating a little bit, prompted them to modify their plans to a certain extent.
Okay. Also, Michelle, you commented on page 18 that the developer had met the standards on lot width at building line, and I have that it's almost half that they're requesting a deviation for.
In your oral staff report, you said that they had met the lot width at building line.
Oh, I'm s-
So, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, that's, the staff report is correct. What I said was not correct.
And detailed in the staff report also is the-
On what page?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Page 20.
Because I follow my page numbers with questions, too.
Page 20 talks about the requirements for the number of off-street parking spaces as to townhomes. And then there is a chart somewhere that talks about the off-street parking. I think that's on page 26. And so, it wasn't really clear to me where we are meeting the off-street parking standard, if at all, as to the single-family residences versus not the townhomes, which you're getting to count the garages for. And I have a big concern about that in this area.
So, the townhome standards allow garages to count for the parking spaces. So, single-family detached, you are required to have one, two spaces per unit. So, when it, so that is a conflict with the way the general parking requirement standard is for, for that section, where there's a footnote that says, "Nope, you can't count, you can't count your garage." So, in that case, there is somewhat of discretion that you have to really see which, which one would control, or whether there would be a deviation, or whether this site overall has adequate parking for the site.
So, my question, I guess, wasn't very clear. Are, is the developer, and I can defer to them later, but is your recommendation on the deviation, is there, are you only counting the requirements per the townhome standard and the deviation from the townhome? You're not counting the standards for parking on the single-family residences?
The standard for a single-family detached, it meets the requirements for the two driveway spots. So, those 15 units are met, and then the townhome also has two driveway spots. So, if you look at the parking standards alone, they would meet that standard. But there's 38 units that have only one driveway spot and one garage spot. So, in the townhome standards, that's fine, because you can count garages for your parking requirement. And in the, but in the standard, parking standards, you can't count garages. So, in that case, those 38 do not meet the standard, but the other ones do. And then I have, I had concerns specifically about those that don't abut a public street where there might be some on-street parking.
Right. And then on page-
So, on the parking, before you move, the 38 in the driveway are for the 38 townhomes, not counting the garages that would comply with the townhouse standard if we were only looking at townhouse standard. On detached families, they require two parking spaces, and they meet that because they have two driveway spots. Those are all the driveway parking spots. In addition, there's 79, or approximately 79 spaces on the street in addition to the driveway ones.
Correct.
Okay.
But just to clarify, but the garages they're proposing are eight-foot versus the nine-foot, where you could actually park a car, so essentially becomes storage.
But we're not counting any of the garages.
Okay, we're not counting.
So, every, all the detached have two driveway spots. The townhomes that have double-wide garages, those meet the two spots in the driveway. So, there's 38 units that only have one parking spot, and then there's 79 spaces on the street. And the proximity is the concern, because the 30, half of the 38 don't have a street near it.
Not quite, not quite half, but.
Okay, so also on page 26, it says, "Staff recommends applicant consider additional parking to the nine townhomes located adjacent to Southwest Minneke." I guess I didn't see what recommendation you're making to add spots? Is that?
I'm concerned about the amount of parking. I didn't design, I, we don't offer a design solution for that.
Okay.
And I'm just bringing it to your attention.
So, but your, your concern is so significant that you're suggesting we might want to consider requiring more parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. And then by the time the parking plan comes into play, which is a recommendation on page 27, I guess I'm, when does a parking plan come into play? Because if we need, if we wait until it's time for the parking plan, my concern is there's not going to be any more places to put parking if we wait until then.
Final development approval.
At final development approval, so they have a, they have an opportunity to modify the, maybe the design of the individual units to account for that parking, and then that would be part of their plan, that they could, they could modify that.
Okay. Then there's submissions by, well, here's a memo, a memo from Bob.
On what page?
April 28th, page 85. Talking about private street width will be widened if necessary to allow for vehicular and truck movement. I guess that's on the private street. And then there was some Tuolton Valley Fire requirement saying that we had to make certain requirements or widen spaces. And my concern was, is any of those recommendations to meet compliance with the fire department's requirements, is that going to impact any of the 79 spaces that are scheduled to occur on the off-street parking? The fire hydrants, for instance, you can't park near a fire hydrant.
True. You can't park, there are certain areas where you cannot park. You can't park in front of a driveway.
Right.
Can't park in front of a fire hydrant. Generally speaking, what we're looking at is, they'll provide us a plan, which will identify all the parking spaces. We'll confirm that.
But in your map, in the maps that we're reviewing, are the fire hydrants identified and the parking spaces accommodated for that, so that we can tell that that's really not going to be a parking space?
I can't tell at the scale. Generally speaking, we would make sure during the design phase that it didn't. And if they were looking at it right now, I'm sure that they, they should be taking that into account, because it does affect everything.
Okay. So, there may not be 79?
There may not be. And if you're looking at turn movements on stuff, fire department turn movements, they may have to drop one or two just to make sure that they have enough clear space around the entranceway onto the private street or off of Cedar Brook Way so that the fire truck can make that turning movement.
Okay.
But generally speaking, I'd say, is it going to be, are they going to lose nine spaces? I don't think they'll lose nine. Will they lose five? Maybe. Who knows? But that'll be, you know, that's something that they should be considering and looking at to define it so that they actually meet the requirement.
All right. Thank you very much.
So, as part of this process, since we're making a recommendation to council regarding the planned unit development, should we consider the parking plan to the detail that we would at our next hearing when we go through the site plan review? Is it?
I think it's appropriate to raise it as a concern in any recommendation that you forward, and then it is appropriate for them to have time to take a look at it and come back in their, in their final PUD approval.
Obviously, we'll raise it as a concern, but we shouldn't be counting parking spaces.
Right. I guess fundamentally, I guess I would ask myself, A, do they meet the code as required today? And if they do, then, you know, that's one thing to consider. But B, because this is a PUD, do they provide enough parking in your mind, and are there opportunities to recapture additional parking? And I think that the applicant will come up and talk about the garages that, the reduced standard, actually, I think that they thought that they were nine by 20 anyways. So, it could have been just a miscommunication between staff and the applicant on those 15 units. That's a legitimate concern. It's a proximity issue. And you can't really designate off-street parking that's on a public road, right-of-way to be designated to be used by this unit, or this unit, or that unit. It's going to be first come, first served.
Right.
And we already know that the Creek Creek condominiums have their problems with parking, and this will have problems with parking. But I will say this, there's nowhere in the city of Sherwood where we haven't heard that there's a parking problem.
Yeah, but, nevermind, that's fine. Okay. Are there any further questions for staff at the time, based on the staff report and what we have in front of us right now? I would like five minutes so that we can review this memorandum in conjunction with the staff report that's just been given. We'll call the meeting back to order, and at this time, would anybody like to disclose any communications they had during the break?
I was asked a question by one of the participants in the audience, and I referred him to Michelle. He did not answer.
I was asking Michelle a clarification question on the trail that is not part of this. We were having discussion with an audience member about the trail that is not directly connected to this development.
Okay. All right. Then at this time, based on my chart, it is time for the applicants. And again, as a reminder, you'll have 30 minutes that's split between your presentation and rebuttal, once you get settled, so. And if you could start with your name and address for the record.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if it's possible to request additional time, just due to some of the issues that have come up and the limited amount of people that are here tonight, but we feel that that might be helpful. So, just to make that request, if that's possible.
Well, we have a script, so if we ask you question, if we ask questions for clarification, it does not go against your time. So, if we've asked a question and you're answering our question, that doesn't count against the 30 minutes.
Is your mic on by chance? Okay, there we go.
Yes. And then if we could just get some help with the computer, getting that set up.
Okay.
Was your computer on?
Yeah. Everything was up on the screen.
While you do that, I want the staff, this is going to be, your staff memo is going to be Exhibit K, right? Exhibit K. Okay, K. Okay, K.
Everybody ready? Okay, great. Um, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate the time. And I just want to also thank staff for the staff report and the recommendation.
If you could start with your name for the record, thank you.
Yep, I sure will. Uh, my name is Steve Miller. I'm with D.R. Horton Homes. Uh, we are located at four-three-eight-zero Southwest McAdam Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine-seven-two-three-nine. Uh, we do have some other people here with me tonight to present. I have Jeff Simpson from Simple LLC, which is a landscape and architecture firm. I also have Neil Fernando, who is the principal for Emilio Design, who is here to speak on any engineering questions you may have on the project. And I also have Andy Teeman, who is part of, um, D.R. Horton as well, to help answer any questions that, that may come up. So, uh, due to the limited amount of time we have, I'll try and be brief and get through just kind of an overview of the project and answer a few questions that were raised with staff and then try and leave that up the rest of the time available for questions from the planning commission. Uh, as staff has indicated, we do have a five-point-seven-seven acre property located at the intersection of Cedar Brook Way and Minekee. Uh, one of the unique aspects of this project is that the road also cuts a portion of the property off and leaves a re, kind of a remnant parcel on the west side that we have to address. So that creates a kind of a development challenge for us there. But we believe we've addressed that pretty well with the layout that we have come up with. Uh, another component of this is there was a zone change and with that zone change, there was a recommendation that this site not contain apartment units as the property to the east of us has. And so we have tried to, um, think outside the box, if you will, on this to come up with a, a design that is unique um, and something that might be, uh, a little bit, uh, different than, than you've seen in other areas of the city. So we really tried to put some thought into this design. Uh, we worked closely with staff on, uh, the design elements of the streets, uh, as well as the layouts of the, the housing types and where the open space would go and how that open space could be used and, and make it, uh, you know, the most efficient use of this land as, as we possibly could. As staff has indicated, our proposal has changed a little bit from the sixty-six lots. We've now removed a lot and have sixty-five dwelling units now. So we are at the minimum density for this zoning district. But what that did is allowed us to open up a little bit more open space. So now we have, um, about forty percent more open space than what is required by code for a parcel of this size. So we're trying to, uh, meet the needs of the residents that will be living here by giving them adequate space to, to move around. One of the other key components that staff raised during their presentation was parking. And, uh, as the staff report indicates, we do meet the, the parking requirements for this. Uh, either, um, on individual lots by providing two spaces in the driveway area or by a combination of the driveway area and the off-street parking. And so with this project, we're required to have two-hundred-and-forty-seven, uh, parking spaces. We have two-hundred-and-sixty-seven in a combination of, uh, on-street and off-street parking.
Does the, sorry, does that include the garages in the attached or detached product?
It only includes what we're allowed to count. So when we're talking about parking and meeting the standard, we're talking about meeting the standard even where they conflict with one another. Uh, so as Michelle was saying, you know, one standard for the detached says the garages can count. But then there's another standard in the code that says the garage cannot count. But in that situation, we can count, um, we can count on-street parking to make up for that shortage.
And the driveway.
And so that's what we've done. And the combination of everything rises to a level where we have essentially twenty more spaces than what's required by code for this project.
Okay.
To address, uh, Michelle's concern, as it gets to the, um, attached units along Minekee, we can, uh, create some language in our HOAs that, in our HOA CCNRs that say that, uh, the, the parking for, um, these units, uh, the garages must be available for cars to park in them. So it will limit the storage that people will have, but we can make sure that the garage space is available for parking through the CCNRs for those dwelling units, um, not only on Minekee, but also the ones that are along A Street as well because they're the, the same product type. So we feel that we have the, the means to be able to address that concern adequately and, and put provisions into the CCNRs that will make people aware that these garages do need to be available for cars to park in them. And so that would make some additional parking also available for this project. I'll go through a few quick slides here to show you just kind of a, a layout of the project. So we have a slide here that shows you kind of an overview of the whole site now with sixty-five dwelling units. Uh, we have oriented the single-family detached to the south to create some separation in space for some solar access into the interior of the project. We've put the more dense units to the, um, east side, if you will. The picture kind of is skewed, so east is to the top. Um, but we've put our more dense units, uh, abutting the density of the, um, of the apartment units that are there today. So, and then we transition away from that into less density as you get to Cedar Brook Way where we have the single-family homes. Within that, we also have some open space and some trails and some connectivity to the property on the, um, west side of Cedar Brook Way where we have a park for, uh, the residents here. Um, when the zone change happened, uh, we put a rendering together to show staff what it could look like if we didn't do this project. And, uh, this is something that you could end up with if we did not do a PUD and you met everything on, on the face. You would have essentially an apartment complex similar to what you have up to the property to the east. So, um...
That would be, like, how many apartments? That's the...
Well, that would achieve a higher density. Uh, we would have a lot of parking lots.
The ninety-two maximum, then?
We would be able to achieve a much higher density if we went to apartment complexes and parking spaces than we have right now with this layout. So I, I'm not sure of the exact density we would be able to reach, but it would be significantly higher than where we're at right now. This slide here shows you a little bit of the on-street parking layout. You've already seen this. Uh, and some of the slides that came up with, uh, staff's presentations, so I won't spend too much time on that. Um, this, uh, going into the architecture of the products, this slide here shows you, um, a view of what, one of the detached homes and what that would look like. Uh, the next slide is, uh, also a detached home, just with a different front. It's the same structure, just with a different, um, front, uh, architectural techniques. The next slide is also a detached home. Uh, it's different from the ones I've shown you in the first two, but it's, uh, similar, you know, in size. Uh, this one is also one of the detached homes. So those are, uh, the variety that we can do on the single-family detached for this. Uh, and we would not set them side by side. We would mix them up. So there would be some diversity there on the street scene along Cedar Brook Way. Um, this is also a single-family. I thought I would be moving on. This is an alley-loaded one, though, as opposed to the other ones you were looking at where the, um, excuse me, every, all of our single-family detached are alley-loaded. So this is just another one of those. Another single-family design. And now we're getting into the attached product. So this would be the ones that are along A Street and the ones that are also running onto Minekee. Uh, this would be the home that would be in those areas. And this shows you a real photo from a subdivision that we've built elsewhere with that product. I kind of jumped ahead there a little bit. So this is also, um, this is the products that you would see on the interior of the subdivision. This is the attached product with the rear loaded off the alley. This is an actual photo, um, of what those could look like. And I, I jumped ahead a little bit. The only other one that I had in there was a rendering of the same, um, model, just a, a rendering as opposed to a, a real, a real photo. And then just wrapping that up, uh, just ending back at the overall design of the project showing, uh, the trails connections in the orange there, that is the, the master plan for, um, the TSP, getting the Cedar Creek Trail across, um, Highway ninety-nine and then over to the trail connection that we need to make through our little park area there, uh, over to the trail that's on the west side of our property there. So that kind of gives you an overview of, uh, the project. I know I went real quick, but I wanted to give Jeff plenty of time to be able to, to speak to his, um, slides and what he has to share with you today. What ones do you want? You want the PDF?
Good evening. My name's Jeff Simpson. I'm a landscape architect and planner with Simple LLC. Our address is eighty-four fifty-five Southwest Beaverton Hillsdale Highway. That's Portland, Oregon, nine-seven-two-two-five. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I'm just recovering from a respiratory deal, so talking makes me want to cough. So we'll see if I can get through this without, uh, interrupting. Uh, the purpose, uh, for me tonight is to present a compelling case, a position for the innovative distribution of our open space to better serve and benefit the community. I want to first introduce you here to this, this exhibit that is showing our subject parcel in relationship to the Cedar Creek Trail Master Plan. So as you can see, indicated with the orange dots and up in the top right corner is a larger kind of view of the overall master plan that serves, uh, the trail system to the central city, uh, city of Sherwood and then, uh, out to the outlying areas. As you can see, the, the trail, the planned master plan route, uh, abuts the south edge of our property. So, uh, wanted to illustrate that and, and, and show you the connectivity that this community will have to that park and trail infrastructure. Oh, I see. Okay. This next exhibit is an overall site plan. And what you'll see represented here in the site plan is the, the open space is rendered as a green color and I'm hoping you can see that on your screens. It's, it's not showing up well here on this large screen. But there's a, there's two tones. Uh, one is a green and the other is more of a yellow gold. The green is actually open space, dedicated, uh, community open space. And the gold color is actually private yards, which would be within the, the boundaries of individual lots. So as you can see in this, in this illustration, there's quite a bit of open space and, uh, in, in, in relationship to the overall project. As Michelle pointed out earlier in tonight's preamble, the subdivision requirement has a five percent requirement for open space. With a PUD, we have a fifteen percent requirement. And our project's actually offering twenty-one percent open space. What I'm here to present tonight is this case that is making a claim that we're better serving the community by dispersing our usable neighborhood open space throughout the neighborhood and creating more community links to open space in a sequence that promotes healthy community. We also believe that the pocket parks provide a more sensitive integration and distribution of building massing, allowing for better solar access to the buildings and open space. The pocket parks with two main features, a centrally located active space, which has a place structure and some fitness amenities. And then, uh, to the west, across the street on Cedar Brook Way is a, um, pet exercise area or dog park. So these are our larger components to our pocket park system. We're also, um, making the point that the pocket park amenities are integrated into the public realm, offering opportunities to connect the community and the neighborhoods together. And we've illustrated here in the site plan, you can see the connection we're making to the east uh, through that corridor. Uh, can, can everybody see that okay? I think it's a little difficult to read these.
And I think the question
I'm sorry?
that was brought up previously was that the width requirement for the trail connectivity, and I think this is, also goes to reducing block size and making it a walkable neighborhood, was, um, a concern raised by staff. And I didn't know if your redesign from sixty-six lots to sixty-five lots increased the width of track B to accommodate the required sidewalk and setbacks.
In this, uh, in this site plan, we are integrating the required five-foot sidewalk and the three-foot side setbacks to accommodate for landscape buffers along the sidewalk. So I think it's a total of eleven feet. All right?
So that, so you're saying that this will have a five-foot wide sidewalk, a three-foot buffer, and then a setback from, for the building? Or the landscape buffer is the prop?
It's a three-foot landscape buffer on each side of a five-foot sidewalk.
Is that considered their yard?
No.
No.
So there's an additional setback for the building setbacks that's required in our code on the townhomes?
Um, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't believe so.
We have set that area aside in a tract, so the setbacks from the townhomes that are, um, on either side of that, the setbacks will be to the property line. So everything that Jeff is talking about with the trail and the landscape buffers will be in the tract itself.
Okay. Okay. And that, that provides the... So when the townhomes put up fences, they'll still be three-foot landscaping and five-foot?
Yeah. Can you advance the...
Okay. And that'll be under site review. I just want to make sure that you understand that's something we specifically called out in the staff report. So, okay.
These next couple of slides are, uh, to illustrate our intent to draw from local public infrastructure architectural language, um, specifically in fencing and, uh, pavement materials, the brick, the concrete. So the materiality that we see adjacent to our project, we intend to pull into our project. Um, as, as we move through these slides, you're going to see some exhibits that, um, are 3D renderings illustrating, uh, pavement variations using the brick or the paver. Uh, we're also integrating the, the three-rail fence into our dog park. And, uh, so that, in terms of the language that we're proposing throughout this, uh, integrated system, we wanted to make a point with this slide and move to the next slide. I think everybody's oriented to the site, so these, these, these photos were intended to help you, uh, understand the location of our project with various views, so I think we can move to the next slide. Uh, this is currently what the site looks like, looking to the northeast. And then, uh, let's go to those, uh, those renderings, those models. Starting there. There you go. Much better. What you're going to see integrated into some of these slides are some quotes and information we've taken from, uh, a variety of media. This one particularly, uh, www.pocketparks.net, speaking to the, um, community benefits associated with pocket parks and linked systems throughout communities. Uh, the other, the other quotes we've, uh, integrated into these slides, and I'll point them out as they come along here, are excerpts we've pulled from the city of Sherwood's, uh, park's master plan. So this particular view is of a corner pocket park in our community that is providing, as you can see, a brick pad, a bench, and some fitness amenities. Next slide. This is a view in, in the interior primary open space. Uh, we're providing, um, a central place structure, trash receptacle, a dog waste station, a bench, a couple benches, actually. I think we've got two benches in this space and some other, some additional fitness, um, stations. This is just another view of that space. So as you can see, we've integrated pedestrian, uh, sidewalk that's for the community and those link to the front doors. So you looked at the, uh, attached product with the alley-loaded attached product facing the central courtyard. Those sidewalks that radiate off this central circulation route attached to the front, the front doors, front stoops of those, of those units. Next slide. Uh, this is a view from above the park. I believe that's Lady Fern Park and we're looking east. The orange sidewalk is an overlay that we showed to represent the actual Cedar Creek mass, trail master plan. So the Cedar Creek Trail Master Plan is, is colored in these slides as that orange route. So you can see the connectivity adjacent to our community coming through... So you can see the connectivity adjacent to our community coming through our open space, our dog park on the left, and the trail continuing into Lady Fern Park and on to the Laurel and Eddie Ridge schools. Next slide. This is just a more bird's-eye view of the overall community, again, I think illustrating the amount of open space that we have and the way we've integrated it throughout the community to provide the amenity evenly distributed for the neighborhood. The quote here from the American Planning Association, "Successful pocket parks have four key qualities: They're accessible, allowing people to engage in activities; comfortable spaces that have good image; and are social places, one where people meet and where they bring people to visit." This view is from the northeast corner looking southwest. Again, I think here is a really good representation between the two color variations. Again, the yellow gold color being the private lots and the green being our open space pocket parks. And you can see here how we've integrated the pedestrian facilities to be very cohesive and connective, linking these spaces together in a very coherent way. Next slide. This is just a zoom in from that same view angle. This is a National Recreation and Parks Association quote about pocket parks have been successful because they're able to respond to the needs of local communities. I think there was a previous quote that I did not point out, which references the impact of pocket parks on property values. So I know a lot of these issues are language in your own code, and we're trying to point that out. Next slide. Thanks. It's just another view of the corner of our project, the dog park on the left and the roundabout there in the middle. Same view, just a little taller. This is City of Sherwood's Parks and Rec Master Plan excerpt regarding national trends. And the thing we're pointing out here is the integration of sports-related activities, walking and exercising with equipment. So we've integrated those components into the open space plans. Should be one more. Here's the overall view from the east looking west. Next slide. Another quote from the City of Sherwood Parks and Rec Master Plan regarding core values and guiding principles that include community, family, recreational opportunities, connectivity, balance. We think distributing the open space throughout the community creates balance and the sustainability with the solar access. We benefit with providing park space and open space between buildings to improve solar access. Next slide. And then the project vision. Again, this is pulled from the City of Sherwood's Parks and Rec Master Plan, balancing passive and active sport and non-sport recreation, connectivity and walkability. And we think our open space plan addresses all of these goals. That's it. That's back to the first one. Thank you.
Obviously, that took the balance of our time there, just to get through that presentation for you. But I did want to point out that I wanted to address staff on a couple of conditions of approval real quick and then answer any questions that you folks might have.
Okay.
One concern we had was condition of approval F5, as it refers to the trail, the construction of the trail. We wanted to see if there could be a possibility, instead of paying a fee in lieu, to either have a fee in lieu or bond for that improvement in that condition. We also had a clarification question on condition G6. We were unsure what the fencing is that you're referring to in that condition, so we need a little help with that, understanding what and where that is. And then the final one is H6, and it's basically the same comment as the last one. We're just a little unclear on what staff is requiring in that condition. So I just need a little clarification to help us better understand if that's doable or not. With that, there's never enough time to get through everything we'd like to share with you, but we do want to field the questions that you have and try and answer and clarify anything that you're unclear on right now.
I have a question. On page 35 of the staff report, regarding the water quality treatment facility-
Mm-hmm.
...under the recommendations, the public improvement plans must include detention and treatment of all storm water on the site in compliance with the clean water service standards. In this book that I have, which we received, I have these plans. I'm just wondering how you can address that as part of the open space?
Yeah, I will bring Neil up here and have Neil help with that a little bit.
Which page are you on, on the staff reports?
Oh, the staff report is page 35.
Okay, thanks.
And the engineering plan is-
Do you have a specific question on it or just the design of it in general?
I did not see that in the presentation. So I'd like to know how the... If this has to be built, where would you... Will it be built per this plan, or are you locating it somewhere else on site?
Hello, my name is Neil Fernando with Emilio Design. 8285 Southwest Nimbus Drive, Suite 180, Beaverton, 97008. There's an existing facility that was built as part of the apartment complex, almost at the corner of Cedar Brook Way and 99, and we are proposing to expand that.
Okay.
And there's actually a pipe that stubbed all the way to our site at the end of the existing Cedar Brook Way, and all our low flows are going in to that pipe, and it'll go into the existing water quality spill, and we will obviously expand it and replant as needed. And all the high flow will go directly into the creek off of Cedar Brook Way.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and I apologize, actually-
No, that's fine.
When I was looking at this, I was looking at Track A, so I was confused with the Track A, which is in your plan, showing a similar location from Cedar Brook and 99, so.
So there's two Track As, depending on which-
Yes, exactly. I was looking... Yeah, that was mine, so.
I apologize if you-
We could make Track A here match Track A that you had there.
There's onsite Track A and offsite Track A.
Yeah.
Yeah. That helps.
Did I answer your question, sir?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
So you're... Do you have any more questions for the applicants?
I have a question regarding the parking.
Yes.
So on your on-street, you're using a lot of on-street parking to make up your parking spaces, and so I'm curious what your plan is to mitigate the use of that for this as opposed to the apartment complex itself?
We have talked with staff about creating a parking district for this project. It was never indicated to us that we should go forward with that, but that is something we'd be willing to do for this, is to work with the police department to establish a parking district for this project specifically. And so hopefully that would be a mechanism that we can employ that would allow the parking to be more available for this project and try to alleviate some of that congestion that you have today.
Right. I guess my concern with your on-street parking is that when we look at that area today, without having a parking district, a lot of this is going to get taken up with your apartment complex that's going to be in front of you as opposed to parking for your residence, which is what it's for, because it's part of, and being used for, the count of your parking spaces in order to get approval for the project, so.
So as a condition of approval, I think it would be reasonable to require this project to establish that parking district for this project. Obviously, the complex to the north there does have its set of issues, and it's possibly because it may have been underparked, and that's nothing we can do about that at this time, but we can certainly move forward with this project to try and not have it become worse.
Great, thanks.
Make sure this is on. Get my glasses on.
I'm still getting used to mine, too.
My concern with the A Street and the roll curb, well, my concern is that, being the fact that the access to the homes are right at that sidewalk, that people who need to quickly go in and maybe pick someone up or park for a short period of time, my concern is that they would actually... Whether it's done or not, I don't know, but maybe they would drive up on that sidewalk temporarily just to run into the house and maybe grab something and come back. How are we going to-
Well, that would be unique if they did that, because there will be a planner strip. So if they get onto the sidewalk, then they're going to have to drive all the way to the other side to get off the sidewalk or back up.
Which one?
I thought you were talking about where the private drive was, Craig. That's where the roll curbs will be?
Oh, so there are no roll curves?
The private alley?
Not the private alley, but on-
That's where we're going to be putting the roll curbs.
Okay, so there-
On the other street, on Street A, it'll be a standard curb.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's no parking at all there. So when we went through this process before, we expressed concern about having setbacks that were reduced beyond 10 feet, the front setbacks. And so can you give... Like, you're asking for a lot of variances on 18. I just want to make sure I understand how much and what the context is of how many different lots are being affected by reductions and setbacks. So the front yard porch setback, we put a line of 14 feet, and so you're requesting that all the porches be allowed to be 10 feet or greater? So what happened to 14 feet?
Well, really what happened is we have a very unique-shaped property here, and so in order to get a reasonable-sized home with parking, a porch and all that, and to get the street outside of some of the environmentally sensitive areas, it created some pinch points on a few of these homes where there are going to be some setbacks that will be less than 14 feet. So it is not that we did not hear the planning commission and what their desires were. It was as we were going through and trying to design something that was functional and to get the street in the location that it needed to be, we have ended up with some of the setbacks that we have today.
And I'm just trying to get context, because the way it reads in here, and this is what we're looking at, is porches 10 feet or greater. So if I'm understanding, the PUD as it's written-
You're right.
...we could have 65 lots with 10-foot porches with lots 38 and 39 having 7-foot. Is there a percentage, or do you have a number?
Yes, well, it wouldn't be the 65, as you can see, because the ones to the north there, or which would be the east, if you will.
Can we rotate that?
All those porches will be...
Can you re-rotate here?
The front yard is in the front where the driveway is, and that's going to be 20 feet from the street. And then you'll have your rear yard behind that. So those porches will exceed that setback.
Okay.
That will also be the same for the ones on Minekey and the ones on the interior. So the only ones that are going to have that reduced front yard porch setback are the single-family detached, and that's primarily happening at the roundabout where the property curves. As you come off the curve there of the roundabout, the houses pull back a little bit, so they do gain setback space. When we put this plan together, we were speaking of the minimum setback in the worst-case scenario on the lots that we're going to have the most trouble with fitting. And so that setback is not going to be one that we bring all the way through the project. It's just trying to address where we have pinch points and where the minimum setback has to occur.
Okay, so it could be fair to say that the porches would be 14 feet with the exception of the single-family detached, which would be 10 feet or greater?
That's correct.
So we could modify what's in the staff report to-
10 feet or greater, right. Except for right here. So, you know, all the porches on the interior face to the courtyard, the front porches. And so again, those ones aren't the problem. But if you look at the corner there, you have a single-family detached that is going to have that smaller setback. And then as you come, as you move up the street there, where do we get to? We get to about 12 or 14, don't we? So as you get to about the middle of the street, the setbacks increase beyond 10 feet. And actually, as you get all the way to the end, you're at about, you're pretty close to 20 feet on the end unit there up at Street A.
Right.
And so they do increase as you come around that street, and the street starts to straighten out a little bit.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have the language correct in the document so that when what gets presented back to us, we're not, you know, I just want to be comfortable with, we're not allowing reduced porch setbacks on 65 lots. We're allowing reduced setbacks on a few of the detached material based on these pinch points.
That's correct. And to help with that, I mean, we do have to come back, and so I'm trying to come up with an idea that would address your concern. And we can certainly get that information to staff and, you know, specify exactly which ones have to have the smallest of the setbacks, but to try and address it this evening, it is the corner. It is the lots that are right at the roundabout corner that have the smallest of the setbacks that you're seeing there.
Okay, so we can get, work with staff to have language brought back that addresses the concern, so we're not just opening up the whole area.
That's correct. No, I understand where you're getting at, and we can certainly, you know, refine that down to the specific lots that have that smallest of the setbacks.
Yeah, I just don't want to be surprised when we come to site plan, because the-
I've been informed that it is lots 39 through 65.
Well, that's a lot more than-
That's more than I anticipated, but it is not.
But the ones in the interior, they're interior.
Yeah.
So that's, the setback has to do with it going right onto the foreyard.
I'm looking more at 39 through 53.
But it's not all of them. Like you said, by the time you get to Lot 53, you're at a 20-foot setback or more. So maybe rather than doing it on the fly, we just kind of-
Right. That's what I'm trying to avoid, is doing it on the fly and get you some concrete information. So by the time we round back, if we get to city council and come back to you and start really drilling down on the design standards, we will have a table put together for you.
Oh, no, it'll happen in this process, I think.
Okay.
I think that's the way it works. Because the other setbacks that I'm concerned about, the single-family detached... I'm on page 19. It's a single-family detached side yards, corner lots, everything, like corner lots are supposed to have 15 feet. We're doing six-foot setbacks.
Which, um...
So side yards.
Corner lots, street side.
Street side. They're 15-foot setbacks. We're reducing it to six. Is that on all? Or there's only one?
No, really, what you're looking at there is you're looking at the corner of Lot 1 adjacent to Cedar Brook Way that will have a reduced setback there at the front of the building.
In Lot 53.
And then as you look over at Lot 28, which is on the other side of that row of houses there, that front property will have a reduced setback to the property line, but then you also have open space, which increases the actual separation between the home and the sidewalk. If you look at Lot 53 at the front where the driveway is there, that also gets pinched down a little bit in that area. And then as you look at Lot 38 on the corner there, that one pinches down a little bit. But again, you'll have the open space there. That one pinches down a little bit. But again, you'll have the open space there between the building and the next building. So in some of those areas that you're looking at where you have some of those corner lots reduced. We're trying to do that where we have open space as well to try and offset that impact.
So that goes kinda into the CCNRs where you would then not allow them to put the 6-foot tall fences on the side so that it kind of pulls.
We wouldn't want that look, to be honest with you.
Okay. And rear yards, there's 6-foot rear yards. And that looks like it's a buffer to the neighboring property that we're going from a 20-foot.
And, and there has, you know, with the lots that are at the east side there adjacent to the apartment complex. We have adjusted those now to where every lot that's up there has a minimum of 15 feet between the rear of the home and the property line.
Okay, so we can change that from 6 feet to 15 feet then?
For lots 1 through 28, that would be the case. Those were where some of the smaller setbacks were. And so we recognized that and adjusted the plan a little bit to gain some space on those lots. So we've, we've shared some of that information with the staff. We can submit the rest of that information into the record tonight. But we, with the reduction of the one lot, we've moved the homes down to gain some additional space there.
Okay, so. That's, that's a lot of change on the, you know, so. I don't think we'll be changing this graph on the fly, but I think bringing it back so that we have a comfort level that.
And to help you understand why we did that, with this request, as the engineer had spoken to earlier. We had to get some design modification to our street standards. And one of the ones we originally requested was to the sidewalk there where you see to the.
That's right.
To the, where the park is there. We had the sidewalk going around that because that is a boundary for wetland. And so we didn't want to go into that wetland and encroach in it. We did not get approval for that deviation request. And so we had to shift the street after we got denied that opportunity. And so that has resulted in some of these changes.
Okay, alright. So when I first looked at this, I thought, wow, that's a lot, a lot of variances for setbacks. When we had just gone through the process saying we expressed a concern about not going below 14. And so that's why I was saying, probably need to bring this back so that we have a comfort level to recommend approval based on. There's only a couple lots that are deviating from the minimum setbacks that we had done, not the entire project is going to be.
Right, and, and, I mean, that's a very good point. One of the things you struggle with when you put together a PUD is how do you address those setbacks? Do you address it for all the lots or do you try and just call out the minimums where the worst case scenarios present themselves? And what we try to do is speak to the worst case scenario.
Then I read as the worst case scenario.
Right, and, and, and you're right, it is. It's the worst case for the homes that, you know, get into those pinch point areas where the streets and, and things come together in a manner that prevent the larger setbacks from occurring. And so as you look at the project in general, we tried to maintain some consistency with some reasonable setbacks. But when we get into some of these corner areas to help meet minimum densities, to help bring in new product types and not have a apartment complex here. It creates some design difficulties that result in setbacks that would be less than what you might see, you know, in a project that might have a more squared up type of a feel to it than this shape that we are dealing with.
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate what you're trying to do because I do understand that the other product that would be really easy to do here is 40-foot tall, three-story apartment complex with meeting all the setbacks that you need to do. So I just want to make sure that when we do this, that we don't consider every lot as a worst case, that we just do our. I guess it's doing our job to make sure that the worst case is on a few lots, not the entire project.
Absolutely. No, I understand that. And, and that's also why we set the street scene up, we did around Cedar Brook. Is to give you the single family home, streetscape there with the street trees as opposed to the large buildings, block walls and parking spaces coming up there. So it's that balance between trying to achieve something unique and, you know, trying to find setbacks that are reasonable.
Right, and the more dense product is towards the center of the product, project where people are buying into the project in every, anyway. And they're not just driving by looking at it.
That's correct.
I understand that. I don't know if any, did anybody else have any concerns or they want to bring up questions to the applicant before we call for public testimony?
Yeah, I want to go back to, so first I'm gonna go back to the concern that was brought up about the curb, the roll curb. Private street versus Street A.
Yes.
So we were just looking at this and on this here.
Four of 11.
Four, yeah, it, it, it actually, it actually calls for the exact same roll curb on Street A as it does for the private alley. Based on this drawing.
Is this a roll curb? I thought this was a standard curb. Okay, it's the, it's the, only the side that's on the east side of A Street that would be rolled, not the side where the alley is. That would not be a roll curb.
So the part where people, if someone were to walk down Street A, they wouldn't be going up and down, up and down, up and down.
That's correct.
Got it. My, the other thing I want to come back to is, is parking again. And this may be as much for, probably more for staff than for you. But I like that, that you want to address the parking with having a parking, doing a parking district. My concern is we're taking, we have this new development. We have an existing apartment complex with a huge parking issue already. And then we have Jim's development of houses that are going in. So you have these three projects. What are we, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna come back to Brad's comment of, it's not like we don't hear about parking issues all over Sherwood. I don't think that, and I'm not, and I don't think you meant it this way, but I don't think that means we should continue to create more parking problems just because we already have them. My concern is, is that now we have, we have the apartment complex. You're gonna be able to mitigate them parking in this parking area. But, you know, how are we gonna mitigate these guys taking up a bunch of the apartment complexes parking lot? Or taking up a bunch of street parking along the houses that are being developed? Right down, I see a potential for a huge issue as far as parking goes.
I, I hear what you're saying. Two things to consider. Mr. Claus's project will meet the minimum parking requirements. The apartment complex when they went in met the minimum parking requirements. These folks are proposing to meet the minimum parking requirements. It's rather a question of, can you actually tell people that you can only own one vehicle or two vehicle? Or if you live in an apartment, you can only own two vehicles and not three or four? And it's also, if we do see that as a community as an issue, then are we setting our minimums too low? But then we also fall under the guidelines of Metro, which doesn't allow you to set minimums higher than what they've already set. So that's what I meant. Parking, trying to solve the problem of parking in any community is trying to put a tourniquet or trying to put a Band-Aid where a tourniquet belongs. You can't control what people's behavior is and the number of vehicles that they own. We just simply don't do that. You know, if you look at Eugene and Corvallis and their student housing, they're trying to do that. And they can do that because they're outside of Metro. If you're building a three-bedroom apartment in Corvallis, you have to provide three parking spaces. But we don't have that standard here. So have they met the standard? That's, that's the question you have to answer. And I guess with a PUD, there's a little bit more subjectivity and you realize that as an issue. What can you direct them to do to mitigate that issue? And I guess if you say, where else can you find parking? Then we're gonna have to sacrifice either open space or minimum density. So it's like, how do we do that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think I was looking at it more from the perspective of, you know, not dictating how many cars somebody can have. But more, you know, this project's approved with this parking. And I think that having the parking district is a good solution.
And they also offered up the CCNRs that have a garage parking requirement in it.
Right, so for the, all the homes along the east there and all the homes along Mineki in particular. Which is where, you know, that could be the worst case scenario. They would not be allowed to overstore, if you will, in those garages, which would preclude them from parking there. So they, they can put stuff in there. And to help you a little bit with those garages, because I know they're talking about the eight-foot door. There's additional, like with any garage, there's offsets once you open up the garage door, you know, to give you space. And so there's actually about nine, nine and a half feet inside the garage and it's 20 feet deep. So there is some space there for, for putting things and a vehicle. And that's what the CCNRs will speak to.
I have a question regarding.
Oh, she had one.
Do you have any, is there any precedent in any of your other neighborhoods where you put that type of requirement in your CCNRs for parking in the garages?
I'm sure there are. I can't think of them off the top of my head, but let me see. I have other folks in the audience here. Andy, are you familiar with that?
Where we have set that type of arrangement up in the CCNRs?
Good evening. My name is Andy Teeman. I'm with D.R. Horton, 4380 Southwest McAdam Avenue, Suite 100, Portland, Oregon. Yes, on, in all of our communities, we do, or most of our communities, we would record CCNRs. And within those CCNRs, we do have a, a parking. We addressed the parking where the garages cannot be used for storage. They must be used for parking. So we've been successful in most of our communities. It's, you know, it has to be enforced by the HOA. But it's, the HOAs are well managed these days and it's, it's been a positive. And we've built these homes in other communities in the Portland metro area, you know, Happy Valley, Hillsborough, Vancouver, Washington. Up in Seattle, we build the same plans and we have huge success. I mean, people like the homes. We are providing some parking that is in close proximity to every home here. So allowing or having that mechanism in the CCNR, we've had some success with other communities.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, your HOAs, are they a neighborhood volunteer organization or are these, is this managed through an outside source?
Yes, it is. We have, Blue Mountain is our HOA property manager. And so they're involved in virtually all of our communities that we have. And the way that works is we maintain the HOA until we get to 80% or more ownership within the HOA. And then they, at that time, will go and start electing their own presidents and treasurers and secretaries and so forth and so on to carry on that. But we stay with this project until it's at least 80% sold, if not greater, before we turn it over to the owners of the subdivision. So we work closely with Blue Mountain to establish those CCNRs, to get everything in place. We set the budget up before we even start selling the homes. So when people come in and start looking at our products, they know exactly what they're getting themselves into and what their dues will be and how this community will be managed.
So you'll have a board with a, with a management company?
That's correct.
Providing the management, okay.
Alright, so one more question for staff.
So I have a quick, so how feasible is it to do a parking district? Are there any other parking districts currently in Sherwood?
And before you answer that, I know that you had to leave and I didn't know if you had any questions or concerns before you left that we have not already addressed. Okay, sorry, I just knew she had, had to leave and I wanted to be mindful of her time.
We do have one other parking district. It's out in the Woodhaven area where that is in force. Chief Growth instituted that, I think, earlier, last fall.
Right at the beginning of the school year.
Right at the beginning of the school year and that's now in effect over, over there. It seems to be working. There's a lot more, less, less complaints from residences in the area with students parking in that area being a problem.
And, and just to help a little bit, we did speak with the police chief on this issue and he was open to the idea. He had no problems with it. He just wanted to kinda get some direction from the planning staff, if you will, if it was necessary. And so he is completely available to work with us and open to the idea.
Okay. And so would that be a visitor, a certain number of hours for visitor space? And then residents would only be allowed to park for lengthy periods?
I believe that the owners of the residences have cards and that they can apply for visitor passes. I think they're allotted a certain number.
I'm not certain. I think that they can pay for more. I'm not exactly certain how that works. But every, I mean, I imagine districts could, could, you know, be different based on their unique needs, too. Process-wise, it's council approval, so the parking district, I believe, was by resolution or ordinance. I'm not sure if it was resolution or ordinance.
I'm just thinking if grandma comes to spend the night and those kinds, I mean, it's different if you have schools with the students that are there for certain time periods versus.
Yeah, with, with the schools, they were set certain hours, so not between, you know, I think after 3:30 it was open. So it was limited within certain hours. But again, every parking district could be unique and so this might be, if that is something that council approves, it might be different hours, different.
A resident, and a resident can also, can always use their pass and park on the street, allowing their visitor to park in their driveway as well. And I, and I do want to say that that area behind, I live over by, in Woodhaven, and that area with the parking permits and that parking district now, it's completely different than it was before.
Good, so there is.
It's, it's been, it's been very effective.
It's been effective, yes. So good to know.
Very nice. Alright, so I'm sure staff has recorded how, there's about seven or eight minutes left. Because I had asked a couple of questions in the middle of that, so.
So we calculated that there was about six and a half minutes worth of questions and there was five minutes remaining on the clock.
There you go, so you got about 11 and a half minutes left.
To, for rebuttals. So we'll let the opposition, or anybody else who wants to speak and then come back? Is that the format?
Yes, so we'll call for people that want to testify for the project next. And if, again, you guys are, you can step, you can probably just leave your computer there and.
Yeah, I'll leave all that there.
Okay, and then, again, if you want to testify tonight, we ask you to fill out one of the blue cards and get them to the recording secretary, so.
Chair Simpson, can I just interject just for anybody in the audience or anybody at home? The Commissioner Robinson left, but you still have a quorum. And if you weren't making a decision this evening that she or any of the other commissioners here would need to listen to the remainder of the tape or the minutes to participate in another meeting, I just want to make sure that's clear. That while someone got up and left the room, you still have a quorum and can still make a decision this evening.
No one else, no one else can leave, though. Alright. David Amami. And if you could just say your name and address for the record when you start and make sure the button's up.
Hello, my name is David Amami and I am the owner of 17565 and 17625 Southwest Hendry Street. These are the two office buildings that has been orphaned and vacant for centuries, I guess. And one of the contribution to that is we changed our entrance to our parking lot due to the people in the apartment parking in and vandalizing the building and actually shooting our windows. And then also doctors, visitors, Dr. Doyle visitors do change diapers, live in a parking lot. Walk through landscaping and Dr. Doyle should be here tonight. He's not here. It's unfortunate to see that if the apartment were owned by individual homeowner, tonight this room would not be enough. Even the library would not be enough. So all of the neighbors are polluters, so they're not here tonight. Dr. Doyle has at least 50 to 60 deficiency in his parking lot. And he goes all the way through in front of peoples in the handly, extension of handly, right in front of people. The apartments owner, they are challenging themselves, the situation they have, so they're not here. I'm the only one that is coming here to talk to you. But imagine we had 70 people living on those apartments which were supposed to be condos, this room would be full of people. We do have a parking problem in that area. I think what, I am involved in a Shady Hollow planning unit development in City of Westling. And I see, because it's an older community, I see different, big difference between cities to cities. And unfortunately, you're getting here exception to exception and under exception to another exception. And throwing so many exceptions on top of each others, we get a mess, which, you know, one of the audience was laughing when they said you see lots of green. I saw lots of white, which is the roof of the complex. We didn't see. Now, when I came first time here and I gave you a letter, which, I'm not opposed to this project at all. I, I am saying that we have to be responsive as a developer. I have developed over probably 18 million square feet in the state of Oregon. And, but I always think about responsibility. In Shady Hollow, we actually, beside having the garages and having a. In Shady Hollow, we actually, beside having the garages and having a parking behind the garages on the driveway, we actually designed another for 26 townhouses. We designed, we put actually parking lot, like a parking lot, because we're next to the Burger Wheel. And, one, first of all, the homes be away from Burger Wheels, so people, when they go to drive-through, don't hear that. And we actually designed parking lot. And because, as you know, people always say, and I want to quickly go through parking district, because I have properties by OHSU, there is a parking district, it doesn't work. I have had properties in Northwest Portland, with a permit, it doesn't work. People in, around OHSU, they copy, they permit, with a copier, regular copier, put it in, by golly, at night, nobody comes to look at it, in the morning, police goes by, it's there, they don't get up and see it, it's fake. And they buy one, and they keep copying colors, and so, there's a lot of ways that it doesn't work. So, I would say that, in my opinion, this is, this variance should be denied entirely, and really, think about me, I'm the only victim here, because the other people are contributor to this problem, and they're not here tonight. So, I hope you deny these variances, and at least get back to a reasonable situation.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Amami? All right, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Robert Claus.
Robert Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Avenue, I want the record kept open for two weeks. I'm just going to run down, you don't have any standards for PUD, somebody finally got around by actually using the right word. These are variances, they're exceptions, they're not deviations. There ain't such a thing as deviation. Reed Dectal versus Cambridge, that's 1929, law hasn't changed. The way you're tying this up, you can't use Cedar Brook anymore as a collector. You cannot use that as a collector if you do this. Number two, you better go out and take a look at the apartment's parking, you don't have these spaces available. Doyle did the same thing, NOR tried to stop him, and we just said, "Let's count illegal spaces as his parking." This problem has been building up over there endlessly, and you need to get an investigation into it, because the police can't and won't enforce it now. Not that that's a problem, of course. After all, the law in this town's only good if Keith May's liked you, "Oh, I forgot, he's not here anymore." I would say this, though, Folsom getting her wish, we're getting some Walmart housing. I don't even understand what you think you're doing here. This is a collector's street, this is parking, this is density, your counts are wrong. On top of that, this is a wetlands on the other side, Lucas had two buildings, you realize this is the problem, Lucas lost in foreclosure. This is the old Howard Hadley piece, when Miller back here was working for Syntex, that was when they put in the vineyards. Gee, I'm glad D.R. Horton's from Texas, never did like the place. I don't even understand what's going on here tonight. He doesn't have his fag straight, you ask him a question, he couldn't answer it, twice. Now, what you've got to do is hold this record open, because I'm going to come back again, after Folsom put 100 units downtown, cut three-quarters of a parking space per, there's no sense in this town anymore. Parking doesn't mean anything, unless you get your art center, and then those on the hill can look down on the rest of us. Too bad they didn't stay out of town. But, the long and short of what I'm telling you, think about what you're doing, you have no rule here anymore. You've got an apartment house over here, thanks to Folsom and Henderson, that's got three-quarters of a parking space per apartment. Keys has almost got the same density they're proposing, are you aware of that? That was 14 units, and 17 is the minimum, Keyston, and he's got more open space than they've got, and he's got more play area, and he's got a parking problem. I mean, I don't even understand what, I want the record open, I want to comment on things, you're encouraging him to trespass on our property? You're encouraging him to go into regulated wetlands? And this is, I mean, I've never, you know, I, well, I know, Michelle, you think they'd run a lot through our envelopes of our lots, and that way you could have Cedar Brook rail, wasn't that what you proposed? I mean, this is so ridiculous, you better start drawing a line. You're having a property owner tell you, Doyle is adding parking because he can't live with the mess he made in 19, in 2006. I mean, you've got a parking problem over there, and you better sit down and work it out. Now, do I care what you do? Not a bit. There's one rule for the Clauses, there's one rule for the Doyles, there's one rules for the Shannons, there's one rule for the Elks, that's fine, that's perfect, I just want a record of it. And I don't, I mean, you're just absolutely encouraging people to trespass into open space, I don't want them on. Now, this may come as a big surprise to you, but I don't like the American Planning Association because they've never zoned anything for animals. Nobody is going to get into that ground, thanks to Governor Roberts, down below. And I don't want these kids going down there and killing the birds, killing the snakes, and messing around. It was left for the next generation, clean water. Not that that would matter to you guys.
Okay. Do we have any other blue cards for, this will be for the... That's Jennifer Harris.
Hi, Jennifer Harris, Rulich Avenue in Sherwood. I'm going to go through my chicken scratch here. Some of the things were already mentioned by Jim and also Sally, but I just want to reiterate, as a citizen, and also president of our HOA, that I've come to represent as well, that there are concerns for us. One of them was the fire hydrants and driveway question about how much parking that will take away. The other, I have a concern about that as well. Street parking on two sides of that, I think it's A, tract A, two sides of parking, assuming that 90%, I don't know exactly, but I'm guessing a large percentage of those homes are going to go to two-parent families with children. And parking on two sides of a street, especially in an area like that, that is so congested, is super dangerous. So, while I'm worried my child might get skunked, I'm more concerned they're going to get hit by a car. So, I just want to throw that out there as something to look at and consider when you're putting a path in a park on one side of a street that has parking on both sides, and how you're going to usher those kids across the street, and what's going to happen when that three-year-old blinks and gets away from mom for a second, and those cars are blocking that path. I have a girlfriend who was going about 20 miles an hour and killed a two-year-old who got away, and it was because they came between two parked cars. I know you can't avoid it for, always, but that just concerned me when I saw that there, in that close encounter of so many homes that are going to be, in my opinion, a lot less empty nesters, and a lot more first-time buyers with small children. Everybody knows Sherwood, and especially that Edie Ridge is a magnet, people want to be there, these houses are going to sell, and they're going to sell to families, and they're going to sell to families with small children. On that note, my prior minivan days, amen, they're gone, but my minivan was 17 feet from front to back, so a 20-foot garage is not going to leave much room. We're saying we have to, we're going to force these homeowners to park in their garage, but then we're saying we're also going to make the garage smaller. So, the two requirements to me sort of don't mix. Make the garages bigger, tell them they have to park in their garage. I mean, that sounds strange to me anyway, but people will do it because they want to live here. But I'm just concerned about, again, a variance on making a garage smaller, and then saying you have to park in there. So, tricky. Just something to think about. Parking in front of driveways, I don't know that that's illegal. In fact, I'm almost 100% sure it's not, because we've been dealing with it in our neighborhood. So, all of these who have driveways, and they said you can't park in front of driveways, I would just look into that. I don't think that that's true, I think you can park in front of a driveway, as long as you're not blocking the sidewalk. So, just something to think about. So, to Jim's point, actually, keeping the apartment complexes from street parking, I agree that that's tricky, but do we have to allow for the street parking to count as the parking count for these buildings? Have street parking, in my opinion, as a bonus for guests, for grandma, but then there need, I think that the homes need to be self-contained. I don't like the idea of saying, "Well, this house requires two parking spots, and one's here, and one is four blocks down around the corner and to the right." So, to me, I just feel like the parking should be there, and I think that, I don't remember who said it now, I think this gentleman said that, "Take out one of the units on each end and throw in six parking spots on each end." I mean, I think that there's a way to do it, it probably hurts their profits, but I just think it's a better idea in general to get these homes to have their own designated parking, and not shared with grandma, shared with the apartments, shared with the dentist, all of that. And I think creating a, an area where people have permits is fine, but again, you run that thing about guests and grandma and all of that, and I think that all plays into it, and the clause property and the apartments, like, I feel like it's kind of like medicine. Does your doctor look at all the medications you're taking, or just hand you one? Are we looking at all of those units in that area and saying, "This development is going to bring in this much parking, this one this much," or are we just compartmentalizing them and not really thinking of the full scope? Let's, um... Oh, and the other one with the parks and fitness and play structures, I'm just wondering who's providing that, if they're providing it. I also just wanted to throw in that I am president of our HOA, we are a D.R. Horton Development. They did exactly what they said, they hung around for the first 80%, and then they were gone. When I moved in, we were all paying dues to nobody. There was no board, there was no president, they were just going into a bank account, half the people were paying, half the people weren't paying, none of the rules were being followed. I've been in my neighborhood for nine years, and I've been president for four, and I am a very lenient HOA president, very lenient. I also live in a really different type of neighborhood than what they're speaking of. So, our lenience can be a little bit more flexible. Some of these things that we're looking at with this, I think, require some structure, and so that concerns me. And then the last thing I wanted to say was, one moment. Maybe that was it. There was something else, but I can't remember. Anyway, thank you for being up here and listening, and I just really encourage you to look deeper into the situation and think long-term, because, you know, nine years ago, or, well, my neighborhood's been there longer than that, but when it first went in, the whole CCNRs and the HOA thing probably seemed great, but 10, five years later, there was nothing being done, no rules being followed, nobody managing it, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify a couple of points from the last two speakers, I asked the same question, I'm not sure if the planning commission caught on that, the Cedar Brook collector issue, I've got the transportation plan with me, because I was told to always carry it with me. Cedar Brook is not a collector when it is on this, Cedar Brook in the roundabout, south of the roundabout is a collector, because it's intended to be the frontage road on 99. North of the roundabout, it's a neighborhood street. So, that's, you know, it's, it's meant to just collect those few houses, and it stubs into, I think it doesn't, it does not access 99 on the other end, so it is only a small street. And then parking on a street is only on one side, they, I don't, they've, I don't know if they've... And Cedar Brook parks on both sides, but there, there's only, it's a steep slope on the, on the opposite side of the development, and so there's a crosswalk suggested for the path, but there's not an amenity that they would be walking across the street for on Cedar Brook Way, the way I'm reading that. So, and then I, I guess parking is everybody's issue on this one. So, I don't have any other blue cards at this time. So, we're going to, we're going to close, we can't close it because we, when, we have the applicant, we've got, we cannot close it because we have been asked to keep the record open for two weeks. So, we will have the applicant, I'm just looking to staff to say, "Do we have the applicant rebuttal now, or since we're keeping the written record open for two weeks?" We can...
So, you can, with respect to the record, you can close the record for purpose for public testimony and hold it open for written?
Comments only.
Right. Or you can continue the hearing to a date certain. Also, you don't have to hold the record open for two weeks, the statute says it can't be less than seven days, but it doesn't have to be for, it can be anything, seven days or more, so that's entirely within your discretion. If you want to close the record for public testimony, you would obviously want to hear the applicant's rebuttal tonight. If you're going to continue the hearing, you could defer that to whatever the continued hearing date is. Does that help?
Oh, yes. Okay, so, I just, I just want to hear from the rest of the commission before we make a decision whether we're closing the, we're not going to close it before you have a chance to rebuttal. The question is, if we continue it to two weeks and keep the record open, then you're going to want to have your rebuttal after we get the rest of the testimony that's going to be submitted. If we close and just accept written testimony, then you would reply by written testimony after we hear your rebuttal tonight, so... We're not ready. So, so that's the question, is if, do we want to keep the hearing open and continue it to a date certain, or hear the rebuttal, close it, and then allow for written comments? This is going to be heard again in hearing at the city council level also?
I'm going to, I want to continue it to a day certain.
Okay. Okay, so you have to talk in the microphone, so that we can, so, there are lots of things out on the table, including comments that we made as a commission, concerns that we have, graphs that we want to have come back to us, and so continuing it to a date certain allows all that information to come forth with it. So, I want staff to, you know, I don't want to get in trouble later from that.
It also allows other commissioners to review the video, as well as, I don't know if we'd have draft, we'll have draft minutes within two weeks, but they could review the video and participate at the next hearing as well.
Yeah.
So, by continuing it to a date certain, I would seek guidance from the staff, we have one hearing at our next meeting already.
We have one hearing for a single-family addition in Old Town.
And so we would have staff time available to continue it to two weeks.
Correct.
And then, we can bring the applicant back for their rebuttal and to ask any further questions, so that we're clear on our direction, so when they come back in two weeks, there's not any more, there might be more surprises with more testimony, since we are keeping it completely open, but...
It certainly gives them an opportunity to respond to some of your concerns tonight by doing so, and it also, then, I guess, we would probably want to allow the public to respond to that information as well, so...
So, I think, based on commission's general head nodding, we will keep, we will continue this hearing to the June 24th meeting, keeping the record open, and at that time, we will take additional public testimony in the format similar to how we did it tonight, to allow additional public testimony, and in the meantime, written record, or written testimony is encouraged. So, we will ask the applicant if they would like to come up and use this time for rebuttal and get any more information on the table.
Just to be efficient at the next hearing, I think it would be nice to just respond to some of the comments that we had tonight, so that conversation isn't lost, and then we can pick it up again on June 24th.
Okay.
There's always surprises at a public hearing, so I'm anticipating there will be more.
Yes.
But, in terms of the first gentleman that got up and spoke, he indicated that one of the problems they have with the apartment complexes is that you don't have fee simple ownership, you don't have people... You don't have people who buy into the community and feel a sense of pride when they live in their home. And that's the unique thing about this project, is all the units will be fee simple ownership. So, they're all going to be purchased by someone who will own them, and that generally adds a higher level of maintenance to the neighborhood and a sense of ownership to the area that they're living in. So, we're anticipating that the people who will be here will be taking a lot of pride and living in their homes and want to maintain them at a high level and also be able to use the park area across the street and have that looking good as well. So, we believe that by setting it up the way we are and not doing your typical high-density residential subdivision or, you will have... ...specific request for a variance, that process allows us to make these requests with the PUD application, so we don't have a separate variance request. We're requesting a PUD approval and with that, we can request these deviations or variances to the standards, if you will. In terms of that area that's on the west and southwest side of our land or the Cedar Brook right-of-way, if you will, we have worked with CWS and received a service provider letter that addresses that, you know, our facilities are not located in the wetlands or in the vegetative corridor. So, in order to get this application submitted, we had to work with them and get a service provider letter based upon our plan to demonstrate that we are not impacting those areas, and they concurred with that information. So, in terms of what other people may do out there, walking around, obviously, we cannot control that, but we are aware that that dry Cedar Creek corridor, if you will, that the city owns, is a recreation area for a lot of people and people do enjoy that. In terms of the fire hydrants, fire hydrant spacing is 300 feet. We're anticipating one or two fire hydrants with this project. One location we identified as a possible fire hydrant location is the intersection of A Street and Cedar Brook, where it rounds, so we would not necessarily remove a parking place, it just depends on how we locate it. So, in terms of the impacts on parking from a fire hydrant, it could be one, possibly two parking spaces that could be impacted, but we do not anticipate more than that, just based on how wide and deep our property is and the spacing that the fire department I had a couple more comments to make real quick. In terms of the street concerns with parking and children and things of that nature, Cedar Brookway will have parking on both sides, and what we have found is when you park cars on both sides of a street, speeds actually get reduced in that situation, because this corridor gets tighter, as corridors get tighter, people tend to slow down and pay a little bit more attention. I don't have studies that I can refer to you at this moment, but there's plenty of transportation information out there that speaks to that aspect of a street, when you narrow it down, that speeds tend to slow down as well. So, we can bring that back, you know, when we come in at the next time and provide you with some documentation that there have been studies done to show that that is a unique effect that happens when you park on both sides of a street. In terms of the garages, we're not requesting any variances to the garages. We're just proposing a single garage as opposed to a double garage, because that's the product type that we have and it's the one that fit in this particular community. So, there's no variance to the garage standard that we're requesting with this. As you noted, the parking is on the east side of, there's no parking, I should say, on the east side of A Street, it's only on the west side of A Street. So, just want to make sure people knew where that street would be parked. As far as parking in front of the driveways, I guess if you live at that house, you might do that, but I'm sure that if you didn't live at that house, that people would not want you parking in front of their driveway. So, I think that just kind of takes care of itself. In terms of removing place, removing homes and creating parking spaces in areas that we have currently shown as either a home space or open space area, in addition to meeting all these other standards that we've talked about tonight, one of the key components for this property when it was rezoned is to make sure that we meet the minimum density requirement that you have established in your own comprehensive plan for this zoning district. So, when you rezone a piece of land, one of the things that the state is looking at is you make efficient use of that land when you rezone it, and you do it by meeting some of the minimum density requirements that you've established for that zone. By going to 65 dwelling units, we are now at the minimum density for the zoning district that's been established now for this property. And so, going any lower, we're starting to put the city in jeopardy of not establishing or not meeting the intent of what the state has put in place for this zoning district when you establish your comprehensive plan. And so, there's a lot of dynamics that I'm trying to let you know, that we juggle when we go through this land use process to try and get a project like this built. And we believe that we've spent significant time with staff and with our engineering departments and tried to come up with a plan that would give you a quality project and address all the concerns that people would have, but there's always going to be some that, you know, maybe not get addressed as well as others would like. So, I appreciate your time tonight and we'll do our best to come back the next time on June 24th to have all the answers that you have asked of us today.
Okay. Just, I just want to make sure you're clear and just understand where my concern was with, and it's on staff report page 18 and 19, about that, the way the staff report reads and what it looks like is that we're asking for a worst-case scenario allowance on all of the lots and if we could better clarify which ones will be impacted and how many variances we're requesting.
Yes, I will go through that over the next couple of weeks and try and make a very clear and concise table on exactly, you know, where we need the variant, well, where the setbacks will be reduced, maybe beyond what is currently allowed in that zoning district.
Or just flagging it on the maps, you know, just to show, you know, these lots will have this variance.
We can color coordinate the lots too.
Okay, yeah.
That might just be a big visual to say, okay, look, we got this big thing and this is where we want these two variances and then this is where these variances are going.
We can certainly do that. We can kind of color it in a fashion where we're meeting the setbacks or exceeding them, there'll be one color and the ones that are deviating will have different colors based on how much.
You know, a side deviation versus a front deviation.
Correct. We'll have a little...
Yeah, because I agree with her that it's important that we know exactly which units you want a variation on.
Absolutely. We'll make that crystal clear when we come back on June 24th, that you know exactly what the setbacks will be for each lot.
I guess, and from my opinion is, from setbacks in front yards that abut the park in the center is different than a front setback that's on the street where it's going to be to our community.
Sure, sure. And I understand that, and we will at least show you where the setbacks, you know, are being reduced, and then you will see naturally that, oh, there's open space there, but we will bring it out so you can see that, yeah, that lot is having a setback variance.
Okay. Is there any other questions of applicant before?
And I don't know if this is a question for the applicant or for Chris or Julie or, but this, I want to get clarification on the comment about the minimum density in the impact to the city if they were to be two units shy of the minimum density. What truly is the impact or is that just a general guideline set out?
No, our, I mean, the staff could address this too. Our code has a minimum and it's actually not the state, it's metro and it's meeting the functional plan requirements. So, it, we cannot authorize, without some sort of a variance, I've never heard of a variance to density, we can't allow you, recommend that you recommend approval for something that just clearly doesn't meet a code criteria. There'd have to be some process, a variance, a deviation or something, and I'm not aware of an ability to have a variance to density. I've never heard of it done. That's not to say it hasn't been done, but I've never heard of it.
And I agree with that. I've not heard of that either, and thank you for clarifying that it is metro, but then again, metro responds to the state and, you know, it's the whole big land use planning system that we operate under, and so she's absolutely correct.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. I think we all have our tasks set forth for the June 24th. So, again, this meeting is continued until June 24th.
We still need to have a motion.
To continue it?
Yes.
We don't need a motion to continue it, do we?
Yes, we do. I believe, I mean, we have one, so.
To continue?
No, just recess the hearing for two weeks and reconvene for two weeks.
Okay. Works for me.
Okay, so, we're going to recess the hearing for two weeks and when we adjourn back on June, or reconvene on June 24th, the record will be open, the hearing will be open for further comment, and the application will be submitting new testimony at that point. All right.
Perfect.
We have any Planning Commissioner announcements? Nope. He almost bolted out the door. All right, then, all right, then, meeting's adjourned.